There.
Oh.
Oh.
What other race can you actually spend the night before there?
I have some under though.
It works out great.
It's great.
Oh, really? No, it's definitely those children there.
There was a family that came from France. Their daughter.
Seth.
What?
Some people are crazy. You know, they are. They're very. I try.
I'm sure as every house. For like nineteen seventy eight.
Yeah.
Hello Irene?
Do you get a chance to do this?
I guess. Thank you very, very much.
You don't need to sign in on this.
I don't know. I don't know why I have.
I do.
You can just give it back to Judy.
You sure to hand this down the table now?
Now it's. We'll see.
Passing along.
Oh, I'll get up. Thank you. Should have been answered by me.
Listen to the video for us. James, did you hear about that? It's ridiculous.
But maybe you were the only one left. I don't know Rodney was here till the end.
Jenny said for me to sit in the back row tonight.
Well, the owl is kind of a mystery. It's supposed to point at who's talking, but sometimes it just finds.
Well, at least I didn't fall asleep something.
Right. All right, well, it's six o'clock, so we'll.
Despite what the clock says.
But that clock is never right.
Never right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand. One nation. Indescribable liberty and justice. Welcome, everybody. Um, I'm not aware of any adjustments for tonight's meeting agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest? Select board members, none. Minutes of the last meeting. We sent some changes to Judy. In particular, I wanted to make sure that you added Brandon's remarks about the cost to the taxpayers of the damage caused to the Walston Road area by tire burning and.
Right, it was kind of in there, but this sentence was weird.
Okay.
But that got in, um, I rewarded yours. I rewarded what you had as well, you know, fixed, but you had so all those money.
Thank you. Um. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes then?
Don't move.
Second, all in favor, that's five. Um, did any of us have communications from citizens to share?
Oh, I had lots of comments about that ramp.
Oh, the ramp.
But I see it's on the agenda, so I'm not going to say anything more than that. And I had an email about, um, staff issues at a transfer station, which I forwarded to Tara since we don't engage in anything regarding personnel.
Okay. Did you get it too?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can you think of anything we need to share that isn't on the agenda?
Uh, just that I've been meeting and communicating with a resident for a long time that wants to add uh, an ADU to her property. And from our current understanding, she doesn't have the septic capacity to do so.
That issue.
Yes, and, um, but there's been, um, frankly, it's been really challenging for anybody to provide a very clear answer on what is required, uh, for wastewater, uh, capacity. Um, specifically since, uh, LD two thousand and three, which sort of lightened, uh, some of the restrictions around ADUs. And so, um, I'm working on it. I have a few other folks in the office working on it. Um, I met with the resident to let her know that this is not just sort of falling, um, you know, to the wayside and that we are taking some active steps. And then Erin is working on a project, uh, to try to sort of highlight um, the differences between, say, an ADU and an in-law apartment and when you need to make certain, you know, what classifies it as what is what and, you know, what is sort of needed for, you know, upgrades or um, lot size or whatever it may be, you know, for, uh, two different. I just think as we continue down the path of trying to solve some of the housing challenges, this is going to be, uh, an important resource.
Well, I just want to make sure we're consistent that and until we're told that something needs to change because.
Problem is that the, the state standard is different for ADUs under LD two thousand and three than what it says for an in-law apartment.
Okay.
So how confusing is that, especially where up to a layperson? It seems like they should be the same thing. I mean, obviously, if you're building on your property for an accessory dwelling unit, that's different than adding on or modifying space in your house. But I would have thought they were the same.
See, I don't think so.
So.
Terms of, of water usage and bedrooms and yeah.
So that's, I think that's what we're trying to get clear so that we are being consistent.
Okay.
When we tell people.
Larry, Larry, did that fix anything? No?
I don't know that he can hear you.
That's what I'm trying to.
Not receiving sound.
Hmm.
You're chatting.
Jackie, can you hear us at all? Can anybody attending here?
She can hear us.
One can hear.
Larry, can you hear us? Wave if you can hear us. Well, that.
So that's the fixing Steve waved.
I was hoping to catch his attention.
Well, we'll keep going while Brandon's working on the technical challenge, but thank you for working on that because it is important that we give people the correct information and that we understand what the rules are. Um, so the warrant that Irene sent us today, um, of course, I had some questions Irene, so are you looking at yours?
Yes.
So, under other charges, the third lying down is the family and medical leave, but there's no number there. It's blank. Is there going to be a number there?
The big family medical leave is paid out quarterly.
So there isn't one for right now?
It will, I will be doing that, um, sometime in October for the third quarter for two thousand twenty-five.
But for today, there, we're not allocating any money for that. Okay.
No, that will, like I said, that will happen once a quarter.
And then the Snow's Point donation. Is that the money that was raised at the Port Clyde landing party?
Yes, uh, we have to deposit, the only way to get it into a reserve account is to deposit it in our checking account and then transfer the money into the saves, the savings for the reserve. So it's part of the money that went into the checking account and.
Then got moved.
And the same was the ambulance. It was a hundred dollar donation for the ambulance, so we put that into the ambulance reserve. That's why you'll see that as an expense.
So the amount that's listed as raised at, at Forest Snow's Point at that party was three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents, which is funny to me that cents were involved at all. Maybe people put change in the.
In the pocket.
Yeah.
And change.
Okay.
Empty their pockets.
Right, well, that was really wonderful.
It was a terrific event.
Did people have other questions about the warrant?
Yeah.
All right, then, um, I take it the select board consensus is to approve these deductions in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Is that right, everybody?
Correct.
Yes, that's five of us nodding to that. Thank you Irene. Um, do we have any comments from the public? Either on Zoom or anybody present about anything that's not on the agenda? No, all right. Um, so Brandon, do you and Jackie wanna, um, talk to us about the mill rate and signing these assessors documents?
Yep, uh, so I sent you, uh, three different options. Um, I'm recommending mill rate of, uh, twelve point eight five, which is, um, up from eleven point eight five last year. Um, that's based on a number of things. Our municipal, uh, budget went up this year and then some of our revenues decreased. We had ARPA money, uh, the year previously that was, uh, no longer um, available to you to help offset that this year. So, yeah, what questions do you have?
Um, I had questions on the warrant. So is that after this or is this part of the same conversation?
So the, the assessment warrant and the certificate of commitment uh, are all part of this conversation. So you need to select a mill rate in order to commit and then, uh.
So that's why we had three different page tens, because those are three different options. I didn't understand that.
Yes.
Okay, did other people figure that out? All right, you guys are smarter than I am.
I tried to include a note in my email saying which one I recommended and then including the other two options.
So is the.
These have different mill rates.
I noticed that. That was part of my question, why weren't they the same? So.
Because, yeah, because they're different.
Okay, so the one that you're recommending is which one of the three where.
Twelve point eight five?
Twelve point eight five is the mill rate.
But which one is?
The overlay is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twelve.
I'm kind of curious.
This is your mill rate.
Yeah, okay. Um, go ahead.
Sorry, Brandon, I was kind of curious what goes into your thinking when you recommend that one over the other two.
Um, a couple of things, frankly, uh, be my preference to um, recommend one with an even smaller overlay. So again, your overlay is, uh, in place to cover any sort of abatement or exemptions that could happen in the coming year. Um, we typically, and then any unspent money goes into the undesignated fund and will um, continue to bolster that. Um, we typically do not have nearly this amount in our uh, abatement, uh, or exceptions, um, exemptions. Um, but with Jackie, uh, being new this year, uh, and frankly, much more diligent than our, you know, assessor, assessor has been in the past, you know, she's visited. I think she had, I don't know if she could tell you, but she's had, you know, over three hundred site visits scheduled for this year. And so, um, that may trigger more folks, uh, requesting abatement or now that there is an active, uh, assessor, you know, considering a resource to retain to, I, I'm not sure. And so Jackie's first time through, we talked about a figure that we were both comfortable with and uh, this was, I think, last year, uh, we were right around this mark as well, maybe, um, just below.
It was, it was about a hundred and twenty-one thousand last year.
Correct.
Um.
So in line with what we.
Yeah. So prepared if there are a bunch of deals.
Or correction.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Whatever you call it.
So should this say twenty twenty-six municipal tax rate calculation or twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
We're sending the tax bill out right now.
Okay, so that's where that comes from. So I think that it would be, um, it would be useful for anyone who watches or reads the minutes for us to explain what a commitment is. Essentially, the tax commitment is what we, the town, are obligated committed to raising from the taxpayers to pay our bills. John, do you have a question?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, uh, in that train of thought, but I would just like to know what were the other two mill rates? Or did they differ in the other two options that you were considering? The other two that we looked at were twelve point nine and twelve point eight. And so what I'm recommending is the one right in between. Okay. Um, the twelve point nine would have resulted in an overlay of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which I felt like was excessive. And then the, um, the, the other option was an overlay of seventy-eight thousand, which does not give you a ton of wiggle room if a couple of big, you know, um, abatement requests came over there, so.
Thank you.
So.
Let's ask a quick question regarding, I know we're trying to attach documents and all that good stuff. If all of these numbers now have been stated and will be in the meeting minutes, do we need to have like that document as an attachment?
We will, we'll attach the one.
Copy of this to attach.
Yes, the one that we select in the end.
Yeah.
Um, but so that people understand how, how we get these numbers and what they are. Um, so based on the property values of all the properties in the town of St. George as established by the state, we owe the county one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand and six hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that we have no discretion over whatsoever. Then the voters in May approved spending five million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars on the town's budget. Um, and then in June, the voters voted to spend on the school six million, eight hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So when you owe, add up what we owe the county plus what we have to raise according to the voters to run the town and what we have to raise to run the school, it comes out to, well, it's not this because that's with a different overlay, right? So does it come out, okay, to thirteen, thirteen million, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Four hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Thirteen million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Down to a penny.
And that's with, that's with the overlay in there that. But that's one of the options.
That, that's the total, um, and then you need to take out the deduction.
So, right, so that's the total. And then we subtract from that money we get from the state. Other revenue we have, um, like our property tax. Well, other taxes like excise tax money that we get to keep and stuff like that. Jackie's nodding, so I'm getting that right. And then what we get reimbursed from the state for the homestead exemption, is that right? Is that where it comes from, Jackie?
This is homestead up here.
Right, I'm listing all of those.
Yeah.
Those get subtracted from the total thirteen million something. So then what we need to raise to cover running the town, running the school, paying the county is eleven million, six hundred and eleven dollars and nine hundred and twenty, wait, eleven million, six hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Correct.
So do people have questions about what this is that we're doing? We're essentially obligated to do this after the voters have spoken and once these figures are calculated and we make a decision on the mill rate, right?
That's where we have latitude to decide.
Right.
No way.
So what we have latitude is the wiggle room amount. Should there be corrections or problems with taxes? And you're recommending this, uh, middle ground of twelve point eight five.
Correct.
So what was the overlay last year?
A hundred and twenty-one thousand.
How much of that got used? What was needing?
Um, I'm not sure. Uh, we did not have, uh, very many, uh, abatements, um. So I, I couldn't tell you the, the total number.
But you don't think the seventy-eight thousand would be enough?
It would be the smallest overlay that we've ever done in, you know, at least in Irene's time here. And so, um.
And it's not like we lose the money.
It's a, it's a good question though, Brian, and it's one that I'm trying to, um, figure out. Um, and so when we have more time, it gets, a piece that I want to look into. Um, now, I think, for example, after our revow, you're gonna want a strong overlay, right? You may get, um, a hundred abatement requests because people may be.
When is the new revow expected?
Spring of twenty-seven, but they are behind as, uh, we were expecting.
They were supposed to, they're supposed to start doing the work now with the background work and then be visiting every property next year. And then the numbers were to be finalized by April first, twenty twenty-seven. But we have reason to think they're not going to get to us that soon. But we're not sure. And the problem we have, of course, is that it's only once a year that we go to the voters and ask them to allocate money for the budget, you know? Um, so this is our one and only chance really to figure out this wiggle room for abatements. And if Jackie's visiting three hundred properties and we've, in the last few months, we've had maybe three or four different abatements, so if.
The other piece that, and again, this is another thing that we were trying to figure out is that, um, I would not be too concerned, like our undesignated fund could stand some bolstering um, because of a couple of things that have happened over the last few years. Right, it is, you know, best practice to keep two months of expenses in the undesignated fund. When we added the ambulance department, which is a million dollar department, we never increased the undesignated fund to match our two months of expenses.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing that started happening at that time is that, uh, Tim and Rick budgeted very differently. Uh, Tim budgeted uh, with a lot of departments then spending somewhere in the seventy-five to eighty percent mark, meaning all those unspent funds were put into the, um, undesignated fund. And every year, the town would, the budget committee would recommend a certain number of, uh, a certain amount of money be taken out of the undesignated fund to offset, uh, the tax burden. You know, at times it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Rick started budgeting, um, much more precisely where departments are spending ninety-five, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of their budget. And so nothing is going into the fund. However, the budget committee kept recommending that we pull the two hundred and fifty thousand out without putting it in. And so over the last three years, from those sort of two pieces happening, right, adding the ambulance and then continuing to use undesignated funds, um, to offset the, uh, the, the total commitment, our, our, the state of our fund, it does not usually cover the two months that, um, is required. Anything you'd like to add Irene? I know you feel.
From my calculations, we're short, the undesignated fund balance is short of about a half a million dollars.
Wow.
So what does it stand at now Irene?
Well, what it stands at now is not really all that helpful.
Ever mattered.
It's not that helpful of a figure.
It is.
Because we'll be collecting a bunch of taxes and, you know, it's just like your bank account on any one day isn't meaningful.
It's like that.
August, this is, August is a tough cash, one month. We have money spent on cold storage still that we need to get reimbursed. Like right now is not a great.
Right, it's not looking great.
So, you know, we had to roll off on, you know, we had to look at what can we postpone paying.
Right.
Which if we had the two months of expenses, we wouldn't be in that position.
So meaning could be postponed this August school payment.
Front of us. Right now, we can't.
So this is something that, you know, now it's been a year since Brandon's been here. It's been a year, well, almost two years since we've had the ambulance on board. And so we're gonna have, um, a more detailed discussion about the budget in October so that, um, Grant and have the budget committee here so that we can talk about these big picture recommendations before Brandon and the budget committee start wrestling with different lines because we have been in a time of transition that we need to.
It sounds good.
Figure it all out. Um, so do people have thoughts about the other questions or thoughts about the recommended mill rate?
I don't have any questions. I feel like we should go with what Brandon is recommending.
Tammy, do you have any?
I agree with Wendy, you know, other than what Irene's thought is that if she feels it's a comfortable number.
The, the only, the only reason that I would go with a twelve point nine would be simply because of the revenue that we're not going to be taking in from the transfer station. And that's, um, the transfer station, they, they estimate that this fifty percent of the revenue that we're not going to be taking in because we're not charging property owners now. Um, last, last year, the transfer station brought in in revenue ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, somewhere in that seventy, but that would be the only reason that I would recommend.
But we don't budget that much. We budget seventy thousand, which means the, the deficit is twenty-two thousand, not actually half of ninety-four. And so I don't necessarily think.
And I, I understand your point. I'm not, I'm not arguing, Wendy, I'm just saying that that's the only reason that I would go with a twelve point nine versus the twelve point eight five.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept, um, the twelve point eight five mill rate figure.
Okay. Oh, second.
All in favor? That's five. So, um, then we need to sign things, right?
Jackie, anything to add?
Cut out for a second, but it seems like maybe you're talking to me. I missed the name.
Yeah, anything to add?
Yeah, me. Um, no, that's a great discussion. Um, I appreciate that you guys are being so careful about all of it. So thank you. And I do apologize for the commitment being a little bit delayed this year. Um, we'll be a little bit earlier in the future.
And again, it's, um, like I said, it's only delayed because Jackie's been very thorough and diligent and getting us caught up, um, after, you know, many properties were designated as just visit next year for quite some time.
We appreciate you, Jack.
Yes, we do.
Is there any theory or philosophy underlying that budgeting, that method of budgeting either at ninety-five percent or twenty, or seventy-five percent? That is there anything that, um, you know, in terms of municipal budgeting, is there anything in terms that would educate us behind the theory between those two methods? Or Irene, please.
Well, as far as the, I mean, when I started, the budget had already been in place. Um, I started in May and Rick started in July. Um, I thought the end result of Tim's budget and then Rick was under a lot of pressure to keep the budget down. You know, so the, the first year, he simply did that by putting real numbers in versus, you know,
Okay.
was budgeting the ninety-nine-five cent versus Tim's budget. Um, the, as far as the effect on the undesignated fund balance, that is more from the budget committee acting on tradition.
Okay.
As far as using two hundred and fifty thousand from the undesignated fund balance, that was just something they did traditionally.
Well, it isn't just tradition. We have a select board policy that says we're gonna have two months set aside and.
Well, that's, that's, we're talking about two different.
Okay.
I was talking about. Budget committee recommending that two hundred and fifty thousand be taken out of the undesignated fund balance to reduce property.
Okay.
Um, but as far as the select work policy of having two months of expenses on hand, um, I have seen that work amazingly well.
Okay.
Um, we, you know, we haven't had any dramatic, unexpected things. Um, and we have just been able to pay bills when they came in. Um, we've, without, even with the select board only signing every other week, birds of every week, we're still not partying on anything. We're still not partying on anything. Um, and. With a half a million dollars that we have. Laid out from the undesigned fund balance to cover the thankful storage road project. We're still gonna be able to pay things on time. Um, even with the property taxes being a little late. Or a little later than usual. Um. No, but it's, it's a matter of. Keeping an eye on the undesigned fund balance. We need to make sure that. We keep it up where it needs to be, we also need to make sure that we don't let it grow too much as well.
Okay, so I, I do think these are the kinds of things we should talk about in October and I think. It's important to remember that the budget committee is advisory to the select board and so. You know, they may make a recommendation, but in the end. It's the decision of the people elected um to decide how much of a cushion we wanna have. Because it is, it is very stressful to only go to the voters once a year and then if. You know, you remember how last year we had a special town meeting just to. Get the new um website contract or, you know, what it was twelve thousand or something, we asked the voters for. To have a special town meeting just for something like that, so these questions about, you know, how much cushion do you put in versus. A budget that's right to the bone.
Right.
Are important conversations that we'll have in a couple of months.
Okay.
So the carryforwards.
Yes, there are um. A couple of carryforwards, one that I'm recommending. Uh, one is for resurfacing, we had uh sixty, roughly sixty-four thousand dollars um. Out of that line that was unspent um. That we are, that I would like to carry forward for resurfacing. Uh, the. Other one is the uh property maintenance line for the uh fire department, they have some work over on the seventy-three station. That they um have begun but have not finished yet. And then lastly is the um full amount of unspent money for the conservation commission. Um, because that is just sort of how they've always operated, um, it is. Not Irene's preference that they operate that way, she would prefer um that be changed, but um Ken said. Y'all remember uh a very small budget this year based on the fact that they've always been able to just carry forward their. An expended fund, so if we were going to change that, now would not, now would not be a good year to do.
I don't think it would be fair for him to do that.
No, I agree.
So there, there are three carry forwards.
Yes.
One for paving, one for property maintenance and the conservation commission.
Correct.
Any questions about those? Um, well, I'll move that we carry those forward. Second, okay, all in favor, all five. Um.
I guess one more time just for the, I'm trying to be more complete with these notes now because I know. I'm trying to minimize attachments because I think if you say some of these things, we won't have to. Uh, Brandon, you said around sixty-four thousand for the resurfacing, might just toss up the numbers for the. Property maintenance and the conservation.
Um, if you email me, I will get you the um.
I'll just put it in.
I will, I believe that from Ken, who sent an email this afternoon, the conservation commission number is. Twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-one cents.
Very precise, okay.
Um. So we have an exciting item on the agenda, which is um the finalized. Version of the comprehensive plan and before John. And Erin talked to us about the, the changes made um pursuant to the state recommendations. I did wanna read you all um a couple of sentences from the letter that um. We received from the state about our plan. It says, we appreciate the efforts of community members, municipal and consultants. Who contributed to this plan, all involved clearly dedicated a lot of time and discussion. To draft this very complete plan. Thanks to the skill and hard work of all involved, this plan will provide important guidance to the community's decision makers. For years to come. Um, so, you know, we really should be very proud of the work. That the comprehensive plan committee did um along with. Erin, our Island Institute fellow and the Colby students um to get this done and as I. John and I mentioned at our last meeting, some of the state agencies did have some recommendations. So John, do you wanna talk about any of that?
Certainly. I'm getting over a cold, so my voice may be a little harsh, um. In addition to that nice letter that Jane just read, we received a number of additional letters from various agencies and departments. That thoroughly reviewed our plan and in those letters they highlighted where there's alignment and agreement that. We fulfilled their important missions with our plan. But there were some additional comments and recommendations about how we could further clarify or improve the plan slightly. They were relatively minor um recommendations. For example, um with regard to traffic safety. The suggestion was to include that a number of accidents are caused by unfortunate um. Deer collisions with drivers on the roads, which we hadn't noted in our plan. And they provided sufficient statistics and information to help us improve the plan and fold that in. Um, Max, who um reviewed the plan, what is Max, right?
Tom.
I'm sorry, Tom, yes, Tom, who reviewed the plan, he said that we were free to edit the draft of the plan. And in, and make those necessary modifications without the need to resubmit to the state. So he said, you're free to make any mo- slight modifications that you wish. According to these recommendations and you do not need to resubmit state for that informal review. So I went through and very carefully analyzed all of the feedback. And constructed a set of recommended modifications and I highlighted the specific changed text. And I sent this to Jane and she reviewed those modifications and she agreed with them. And for the most part, we had an exchange on one edit where we came to a um. We revised uh that text with um. A certain section of, of language omitted. Anyway, we sorted that all out and then I. Put, put it to Erin, help with revising the, the draft, which she did very nicely and right soon. And um, the last suggestion was that the maps that we had included in the plan were. Um. Insufficient, they were not of high enough quality to be um interpreted well by the reader. So we took extra steps to replace all the maps in the plan with updated maps that I got from Erin and um. That really made it pop, it looked terrific.
Where did you get better maps from?
If, I don't wanna get too technical, but we received PDF maps. And we were working in Google Docs and Microsoft Word and trying to embed the PDF images into those. Formats, reduce the quality through, for variety of technical reasons.
I can understand.
I tried about eight different ways to do it and then eventually we just, we worked on this together. I converted the document to a PDF and then I inserted the PDFs into a PDF and it kept the highest possible quality. And that was the.
Original maps were okay.
Originals were perfectly fine, it's the way that we were trying to include them in the comprehensive plan, that was a problem. But we overcame, so. Uh, the draft has been put up on the town website, we, for your review, along with the spreadsheet of all the specific edits made. To the specific sections that were relevant.
And they're really, the only, there were no substantive changes.
There are no substantive.
No, there was just a little um modification of the language. The um, the main CDC drinking water program. Reviewed our plan and did have some um recommendations about. Um, educating the public or amending protections for. Public wellheads, groundwater, aquifer recharges and um. To help ensure that people have safe drinking water, so the only change was to just clarify that we will be. You know, adding information to our website, which we've discussed in the past about how people can protect their water.
I want to underscore that, um, to, to your point, Jane, there were no changes of any kind, any recommended policies. All the policies remained intact as originally drafted. So it was just some of the narrative that was updated to include a little bit more clarification and detail.
Um. So do people have any questions before we approve the final comprehensive plan? And it is on the website now, so the public wants to um click on. The comprehensive, twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan, that's the one that's been approved by the state and incorporates these small. Changes, um, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the final comprehensive plan.
Second.
All in favor, that's all five of us. Thank you very much for an amazing job that took almost two years. And even hearing John talk about the map quality. This is one of many reasons why he was such a good choice for this committee and his chair. Because there were multiple times in the last two years where his IT experience was really helpful. And then having Erin um do a lot of the legwork. We've just had such a great team.
So I would pay you the big bucks.
That's right, we're gonna have a party after it gets approved, so the next. Um, thing we need to do is decide when we'll have a public hearing. Um, so the public can hear about the comprehensive plan, I know they've heard about it several times, so maybe no one will come. But um.
You offer food.
Well, they're, that, that could be the answer, so um, of course, the um. The law provides dates for this and um. We have to have a public hearing thirty days after we make it available for review. So now that we've um approved it tonight. Um, we'll need to make some paper copies of it. I suggested three paper copies so that there'd be two upstairs. If people wanted to come in and look at it on paper and one at the library. If people have other thoughts about that, we should share them, it's two hundred and eighty-one pages before the appendix. Is that right?
It's, it's in total.
Or is that wrong?
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one?
I wouldn't make more than three copies of that, right?
Yeah, that, I, and I, you know, I think um. I don't know how likely it is that people would. Be looking at paper copies and right now, this is the before the vote, you know, we might make, I think we could easily make more copies. After the voters approve it so that there would be some copies at the school, more than one copy at the library, more than one copy upstairs. But I'm just thinking between now and the public hearing, if we have three copies, that's probably enough, plus the online. And if they can make three copies this week, um, we could have the public hearing on September twenty-ninth. Our next, we have, the meetings we have in September for the select board are the eighth and the twenty-second. So would people think Monday, the twenty-ninth, there was nothing else on the town calendar?
Could we just have it, oh wait, the, the twenty-second is too soon?
Yes, the twenty-second is too soon. I mean, we could do it at the one after, you mean at a regular, like, an hour before the select board meeting? Like at five on the first.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that too, if you could just divide it with this.
With the select board meeting, the first one in October, which would be, what, Tammy?
Six, six, October six.
October sixth or sixth. All right, um, that makes sense, so five o'clock at October, on October sixth. And then.
Select board immediately following.
Select board immediately following, so if nobody comes. Then, five fifteen.
Bring treats.
Um, okay. So everybody's in agreement about that and then for the special town meeting, um. You know, we can decide when we wanna do that, I'm not aware. Of anything else that requires a special town meeting this fall, are you? Jackie's gone.
That, that you had just recently emailed something about.
Well, I did, but that was a school thing, but it's clearly not gonna be needed, so. So then I think it will be up to the um select board and the town manager to pick a date. When we'll have a special town meeting, which could be anytime seven days. Or more, well, there has to be seven days notice, so it could be, say, mid-October to November, whenever we wanna do it. We don't have any elections in November, right?
Not this year, right?
I don't think folks on the left or some other thing.
But something could come up.
All right, well, we'll, we'll check with Tara so that, and maybe, you know.
It can be combined.
He says that there is.
Oh, there is.
There was concern about that, and not, not, now that it's a special town meeting, but when we're thinking about possibly doing a ballot, so.
So, um. Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have to talk to Tara and figure out what makes sense about that. But we've got the um public hearing scheduled now, so. Um, if you can have that. Put that on, or do you want me to tell him?
You can let him know this.
All right. I'd also, um. We, I forgot at the last meeting to nominate Gary Plant to the budget committee, he's a new CPA, he's moved to town. He's not a new CPA, he has um an accounting business in Portland. Um, but he and his wife have um. Settled here and he's interested in the budget committee and he went to one of their meetings and is willing to serve, so. I would like to um nominate him to serve on the budget committee as a full member.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, that's five.
We, Tammy has a committee nomination as well.
Um, Bruce Fagley would like to join the recycling committee.
So you're nominating.
I would like to nominate Bruce to be a member on the recycling.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, all in favor, that's five.
We have his certificate of appointment.
Okay.
So if you sign that.
We need to sign anything for Gary?
No, I don't have it ready, I need to send Patty St. Clair that information. All right, so the next item on the agenda is. I thought that if we had regular discussions about the select board priorities that we set. Then we would all be paying attention to these and keeping them in mind. Um. All the time and. I don't know if you all looked through them, but I thought if we talked about the first one tonight, which is. To continue to improve communications with residents. About all issues through the town website, the newsletter, notifications. And other means so that residents always have access to accurate and timely information about what town government is doing. That we could talk about um communications we'd like to engage in. This year and I just included some, some thoughts based on things I know. The group is working on, some of which we've even talked about already tonight, um, we already talked about. Posting information on water quality on the website. Um, I'd, I'd be good to do something similar with resources about septic issues. And we talked about. And we talked about. The ADU or in-law apartment information, which Brandon mentioned. He's, he and Aaron and Terry Brackett are working on frequently asked questions about those things to put up that on the website. And.
Someone, I mean, we've been talking about the water quality one for a long time. I'm not sure that. Who's that expected to come from?
So I. Last year, maybe nine months ago or something. I drafted something that had input from David Brockie and. There and mostly it's resources, state resources. Like the main CDC, you know, where you go if you. Have your water tested and there's a problem. And then it's also reminders of the fact that it's your responsibility. To test your own well. If you want to make sure your drinking water is safe. And then the fact that the two water districts do their own testing. So there is something that's already been drafted about that that we can. All look at again. And one of the questions is figuring out where it should go on the website.
I can handle that part. I just wanted to make sure that somebody was.
Yes.
Taking it on.
Yes.
Is it, there isn't a neat fit on staff for it? And wanted to make sure that the full board. Sort of signed off on it, knowing there's been a lot of discussion about what we should put out there.
Right, and what people had said when we talked about this before was that we really wanted to direct people. To resources and make sure they understand it's their personal responsibility that the town doesn't do water monitoring for people. So I can share that again. But one of the important things, obviously. Doing the commitment tonight. It's really important that the community understand the process by which the budget is developed. And, you know, you, we all remember the budget pie charts that Brandon's done in the past and. He's just, have you already done it? He's updating this. Pie chart because there were some adjustments. I don't know if you remember hearing that the school's. Health insurance cost was lower than what they had projected initially, so that did shift. Their piece of the pie a little bit. But I think it's important to always have this. On the website and I told Brandon, I also thought that we should have a stack of these. In the town office in the next month when people come in to pay their tax bill. They could pick one up and they can look and see this is where the money's going that they're paying for, what they're paying for.
A lot of that is on the tax bill.
Right, but this is such an easy way to look at it, I think. I don't think people, I don't know. Who's reading the fine print on their taxes? Wendy does. Yeah.
Beginning to break down though, you know, what percentage is school, what is town, what is county?
I know, but I still think it's good to have a stack.
Visual.
Yeah. Around and on the website. And I think. Jackie had mentioned to me and somebody else that it would be helpful if. On the finance page, we had kind of a plain English explanation of. The commitment process, you know, this is where these numbers come from and this is how we decide. You've decided, the community, not the select board, what we have to raise on your behalf. So. And Jackie also drafted, which I, I picked this up at the. Send this down when you had the open house. It's common revaluation misconceptions. And I think we are going to want to make sure. We have. Information out there about the revale before it happens so that. People. Don't freak out and assume that if they're.
The assessor is out to get you.
You know, people are under a misconception that if, if their property value doubled, that their tax bill is going to double and that's not true at all. Um, so.
Go down.
Right, so it, it's important for people to understand how it really works and that it doesn't mean that.
There's been a number of pieces on the local news.
Yes.
That spout conspiracy theories.
Well, yes, it's really unfortunate. In fact. A local business owner emailed me and Brandon about the fact that Midcoast Villager and the Courier. Are kind of stirring the pot in Rockland and other places, whereas the Bangor Daily News articles. Are much more.
Responsible.
Much more responsible and accurate in their explanation of revaluations. And so.
The important piece to distinguish about the Midcoast Villager article is that our. Tax landscape is very different than Rockland's. We do not have the sort of high valued commercial properties that Rockland has. And so the value shifting to residential is not going to be as drastic down here where we are primarily residential.
Yeah. Well, I think there's been some articles about Rockport, which stirred the pot.
And and Camden.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think. So. Jackie was involved in those discussions and I think she's really. As we've all observed, a very capable communicator. So the more we get ahead of that, I feel like the better off we'll be. And we do have the. Resilience efforts that are going on all the time. Aaron told me today that the resilience committee is planning. Public meeting in October to tell people about the climate action plan and where that stands. So I think that's.
Are they also tying in the other project to that public meeting?
No.
Yeah, the decision was no because they want to confuse people about what's part of what. So it should be two separate meetings.
And there's going to be two meetings that both towns are invited to. So there's going to be one held here and one in South Thomaston. But, you know, if you're. A resident in St. George, you can go to the South Thomaston if you want to.
So I think it's, it's good for people to know. What the committees are doing and for us to be communicating. As well as possible. Obviously, we've all been seeing. Information about the Snow's Point Lodge fundraising. There were the pamphlets that were handed out. At the. Fundraiser at the landing and I'm assuming there will be other communications about that. What?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
An update.
Alright. And one of the things that Aaron is working on is. A publication. A handout that we can give people about being a good neighbor when you live in a working waterfront community. You know, understanding that people who are clambers may want to cut through your property to access clam flats or. Understand that it means boat noise or lights on a dock or. And. Boats in people's yards and traps and, you know, not. Accommodating that, not complaining about things that are really critical to our economy. And we were actually talking today about. How important it is that this piece show how many jobs in our town are dependent on the working waterfront. And the amount of. Dollars it generates, which is millions and millions of dollars. Of our economy, so. So that's something that Aaron's been working on and I put the link here to the scuttlebutt. Which is what they call that little news piece. At the Midcoast Fisherman's Association, the one they did for Herpswell, which. Aaron's using that and some others as a resource. And then. You know, I, Wendy, what's the status of the? We're not going to call it contract zoning, we're going to call it community development. Something.
Um, I think zoning, the last piece was an email. From Rob Kelly to maybe you and Brandon about. They were working with that dooryard. Company to come up with some language to present. But it has to be in the context of an application. It can't be, you know, amorphous. It's not an ordinance. It's got to be tailored to that particular program.
So one of the things I wasn't sure about from the things that I read was whether. We first need to have an ordinance that allows for such a thing and then. There are individual projects that get approved to be covered by it.
I worry this conversation is straying from our communication plan and getting into something that folks might be interested in. Have they seen it on the agenda?
Well, that, that's true. But so the point being that. Whenever we figure out the answers to these questions, we will want to do clear communication with the public.
I'll just say, I think it's going to be in the context of a particular application. It's not going to be. Townwide. It should not be townwide because then it's not, it defeats the purpose of the project. So. I think there's going to be communication regarding. Particular application, when appropriate. I mean, it's down the road. It's not happening right now.
That could be an agenda item on another meeting.
Well, yes, and Rob, Rob knows that we're hoping he will come to us when he's ready. To talk about the Brookside project and I know. At the school, they had a booth and Margot Kelly handed out. A piece which Mike Felton later emailed to me. I should, I'll send you all that. And I'm sure it's on their website, the, the CDC's website about the Brookside. Development, what's contemplated at the moment. But.
Just putting. Brandon's made a good point.
Right.
Have that.
Right, so these are just topics about which we will want to do communications in the coming year. Once we have details. Nailed down about each thing. But I wondered whether the rest of you. Were aware of other committee work. I mean, obviously, the cemetery committee. Is working on proposed policies. That we would have communications about. I don't know if the, the transfer station has a lot of stuff already on the website.
I think.
They're pretty good.
A recommendation maybe for this group to consider. How we communicate with the public. I don't, yeah, I, I don't think that. What's missing from the website is necessarily the problem. I think it's that people, not many people read everything that's on the website.
Right.
Right? And so if we have important information that we want to get out. Is the website enough? Is the website and Facebook enough? And I think what we've found historically is. No, it could probably be better. And so I would encourage this group at some. Future meeting to have to brainstorm some ways that we'd like to.
Yeah, town crier.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, people are not, not everyone's on a computer. So, yeah, we got to think about that segment of population.
Just the dragon.
Well, and the newsletter, I think. That really is a good resource for the people that don't go on that line. And so.
But need hard copy.
But people. Yeah, and not everyone's signed up to receive a paper copy.
Right.
Because at some point, people were receiving it and then you had to go on and say, I want to continue to receive it. And I think a lot of people dropped out then.
And so you're right, and we don't know whether or not it's because they didn't want to receive it or because they.
Right.
Missed that communication.
Right.
Is it still an option to get a hard copy of the newsletter?
So maybe. You know, when we got the new website. Bill Batty sent out. Notification saying if you want to sign up, how you did it, you know, just like at the town open house. He was upstairs showing people how to sign up. We need to figure out how to reach more people and to let people know. How to sign up for either the, the paper copy of the newsletter or notifications on either email or text.
See, I think that email, and I'll say for myself, went to a junk folder and I never saw it. You know, it's my junk folder is emptied every ten days. So if I don't look at my junk folder, which is full of a lot of junk. Then I don't see things, so. Yeah.
Sounds like something for Bill Batty to mold.
Well, but we need to set the policy. Obviously, we all want to make sure we reach as many people as possible. And that people know where they can get information.
I know on my laptop, if I. Get it, get it out of the junk file and put it in the inbox and label it not junk, then the next one from that source.
I know, but people don't know to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they maybe didn't get the first one to take it out of the, so.
Yeah.
It empties every ten days.
Yeah.
You're definitely going to miss stuff.
Are we able to make hard copies again and just leave them at the post offices or hand them out at the senior luncheons or?
Well, the senior luncheon is definitely a place.
Yeah, they have, they have prints some on and leave them in the lobby for people to pick up. There's also a lot of people that there's made.
The hard part is that there's a lot of folks in town that come in the town office once a year or never.
Library is another good place for.
Well, you know, given that a lot of people will be coming in in the next month to pay their taxes. It might be useful. To have something that's, that says if you want to get the newsletter. Check here. If you want to, you know, get notifications by text or email, here's where you go. And then people.
That should always be available.
Yeah.
You're right.
Have it sitting out there, but especially this month, you know, the months when people come in to pay their taxes in person. Don't you think most people do that in person instead of some other way?
I do.
Yeah.
We hope they do.
Right.
Well, because if you pay with a card, you have to pay the three percent or something. So I don't think people are doing it online. I think they come in.
You know.
Those don't have to either. It's in this.
Online, then I'm seeing an increase in people paying with property taxes online, even though they do have to pay the state the. The fee.
Also could be some of the people who are out of town, right?
Seasonal. Yeah, a lot of seasonal people.
Come drive up here to come to the office.
So other than doing that, do people have thoughts about communication, the means of communications or. Particular topics you want to see us focus on?
No, I mean, I think we are trying, but there's always going to be a segment of the population that is hard to reach. And we know that. And we, I mean, we can't give up, obviously. We just have to keep trying things.
And, you know, add a year ago, these meetings were on YouTube, right? Now they are and.
Well.
Yeah, but, yeah, and some of them, you know, all of them have more views than they have people in attendance, so.
I know and that, yes. Oh, yeah, don't get me started about that.
Some people don't like to look at themselves online.
My soul is being stolen soon.
We didn't know you were a Native American woman. Well, I, Brandon sent me a picture. Of Lupin watching a YouTube. The select board. I really enjoy.
Yeah, I think.
Sleep and. Sleep and do.
On the left.
That's very cute.
Was very cute. Well, thank you. And remember that, you know, this is something that as a liaison, you know, you can be helping with making sure that the committees are thinking about um, the fact that we wanna get these messages out. So, um, what means should we pursue, bring those back and we'll work on it? So now we're at your report.
Just a, just a couple of things on there today. Um, just wanted to circle back on the conversation about the ramp at Driftin'. Um, Wendy, do you wanna share any of your?
No.
Um, so after the meeting, um, Susan, uh, sent me an email, uh, with a photo of it, um, and highlighting the rocks at the bottom that I were not, that I was not aware of. So, you know, some of the complaints about, uh, rocks at the bottom of the ramp. I was not, um, aware of the current situation. Somebody had piled up a bunch of rocks. Um, I assumed that, I thought that folks were talking about the rocks that were on the beach at the bottom of the ramp. Cause I had had that complaint last year. Um, so anyway, uh, Steve and I removed them, uh, put in a gravel pad uh, that worked much better, um, for three days. And then the high tide washed it out. And so he's,
Yeah.
He was back down there again today, building a gravel ramp. Again, it was never supposed to be, um, long-term solution. And so, uh, because of that, it's not ideal. But we are late in the season and so we'll just try to stay on it. Thankfully, mowing has slowed down. So he has some a little bit of free time. Um.
When is it removed? When?
Um, it really depends on, you know, how warm our September is, you know. Sometimes the last couple of years, it's been one of our better beach months. So we've left it in. And then typically it comes out, or last year it came out around the, uh, same time as the, uh, floats, which was like mid-October, the 11th, 15th, somewhere in that range. So again, recognize that it is not a great long-term solution. It was never intended to be. I do think it's better than if we were to pull it out.
Oh, a great stopgap measure and people appreciate it. I see a lot of people using it.
Oh, it's true. When those, whoever put those huge rocks at the bottom did, everybody had disservice.
What were they thinking?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's, it was definitely harder than just taking a bigger step down off the ramp. Um, the other piece is we left a broom down there, uh, so that folks could sweep it off if they felt like it.
That's what I've heard is it's really slippery when there's sand on it.
Yeah, so we left a broom and then Steve.
It's still there, so.
Yeah. And Steve, Ryan and I all tend to go to Port Clyde almost every day in the summer and will normally swing through and sweep it off real quick just to try to keep it.
And to help to put some of the grip strips on it, you know, like they do on steps.
Yeah, mine, it probably would. Um, I don't know what sand does to those, but, um, it would probably.
They're just sand glued to paper or something.
Right, so it could only help, right?
Right.
It's a good idea. We can look into picking some of those up. That's really all I have for the update. I just wanted to circle back because my response to some of the comments was based off, uh, a misunderstanding and so. And then, so that's point fundraising update, um, we saw a figure for thirty-eight hundred. I actually think we got, um, a few, a hundred more dollars, um, in the, via the online, uh, I think that was the cash and checks that were raised at the night. And we've got some that came in through the online fundraiser. Um, I know that Mike, uh, from the QP food truck, he donated a bunch of the, I think, he donated a bunch of money that he made that night back to the. Yeah. Um, one further update there is that, uh, he decided to just stay there through the end of September, once this, this board, uh, you know, signed off on and said that it was allowed. And so, um, or not the end of September, sorry, the end of August until September, uh.
So Monday, Labor Day or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah. But anyways, for the snow's point, um, fundraiser, I've got a meeting this week to just sort of talk about, um, to try to bring in some partners and figure out, um, another event, you know, in, in my mind, um, I really think this was a great launch to help get, um, some folks aware of the project. Uh, but you probably need a few of those attempts before people really know what's going on. And so I'd like to do another, um, event and I'm working on that and we'll keep this group, uh, in the loop.
You know, it was pretty popular that they had at the Oddbells Hall was a dance with old time rock and roll.
Oh, that's right. That was fun.
Big turnout.
Okay.
Right.
I don't know. Oh, you weren't there. That's right.
No, I wasn't.
Uh-huh.
But that's a thought.
Right.
Fundraiser and also getting the word out.
Yeah, and it was in the winter when there was, when there wasn't much else going on for fun. So there was a good turnout. But if you did something that that brought up families, you know, since it's a family place, I'd love it if we could have an open house there.
I think we will. I would like to make, um, what I would like to do, you know, we've already raised enough for one of the projects. Um, there are some other money that we potentially have available in a reserve that I'd like to, so anyway, I'd like to make a solid start on some of the renovations. And then hold, um.
It's pretty fun to be there right now. I wouldn't, I would.
Well, right now, the, you know, the electric's off because they're switching it over to the town. Um, but yes, I think at some point it would be great to have a, uh, an event in there or an open house.
Yeah, people could come and see it.
Visualize it. Yes, all that.
Right. I, I noticed, was it today that they started work on the crosswalk to the Happy Clam?
Well, they started the work almost a month ago, but, um, they resumed the work, uh, today. Yes.
So the state's doing the work. Who's doing the work?
No, Jimmy Calliff is doing the work. It, it was permitted through the state. Um, but, uh, we.
Who pays for it? Us?
Uh, us in partnership, um, with the Happy Clam. The Happy Clam agreed to pay for portion of it. Um, it was required for him to have his parking lot, plus to put a crosswalk in. And the town had his desire to solve the you, the sort of dangerous. Yes, exactly. And so Greg, you know, agreed to pay for half of it.
So when do, do we have any target date for when that's gonna be done? I mean,
Soon.
nearing the end of their season too, I'm sure.
Yeah, but my guess is that they will be back and busy again next season. So.
Oh, yeah.
We can put one there, right on one, on a state road. Why couldn't we put one at Village Ice Cream in Port Clyde and have that a safer intersection?
What I have been told is that they do not wanna put a crosswalk directly onto, uh, like a business's front porch.
The landing points on both sides are not appropriate.
That's what, it's the state. When you say they, it's the state that has resisted.
That's right.
Because you need a handicapped apron on each end of a crosswalk.
Which could be done.
It could be.
Not, not really there. The front step is right over the.
Well, but you could do it a little north of there, like that, the other end of that building near the parking spaces.
Yeah.
You know, it, it does seem like it, something is possible that would be safer than nothing. I don't understand the state choosing the perfect crosswalk over no crosswalk. That doesn't seem.
Well, I know there's been extensive discussion. I mean, this has come around several times in the last five years. And the state always says, there, yes, there's no place for it to safely exist.
But they, that's right. They also said to us in the past that we shouldn't give up on things. So maybe we go back to them.
I mean, that spot seems as dangerous as the Happy Clam to me.
Oh, yeah, I agree. To pedestrians.
Yeah.
Really. I mean, that.
I mean, I think the argument is that, you know, it turns into a twenty-five much, much earlier in Port Clyde than it does in Tenet Harbor.
Well, and the, the reason for it at the Happy Clam is he wants to have parking across the street. That's the reason for that and getting cars off one thirty-one. It's a different situation in Port Clyde where it's all about pedestrians not parking. Um, Well, just for the record, we are unhappy with the state's position on that.
I guess.
So that was it for your report. You didn't have any other items to share?
Nope.
Okay. Committee reports. You, you two are free to stay or go as you wish. Yes.
I'd love to stay, but.
Yeah. Go rest. Get some rest. Thank you again, John. Um, committee reports, the planning board.
Board is meeting tomorrow night, the first time in, um, several weeks. So I have no further update. Um, until tomorrow night.
And Board of Appeals.
They are meeting on August twenty-eighth for their organizational meeting and I will attend that in the report.
And once again, if anybody reads minutes or watches the YouTube video, we are looking for uh, a Board of Appeals member. So if there's anybody who's interested in um, being involved in that, they should let me know. The Harbor Committee. Okay. Um, Budget Committee has not met. Cemetery Committee.
Um, I have not met.
They're meeting a week from Thursday, I think. Are they meeting the first Thursday of the month?
I'm guessing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, I, I think so. Yeah. Um, the Emergency Services Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, September second at six P M. Upstairs. Um, the TIF Committee is still on pause. The Comprehensive Planning Committee has finished most of its work. Um, once the community approves the plan, we will, um, get their input on, um, an implementation and tracking document that Aaron created. It's an Excel spreadsheet that should help every committee. So like if you're on the Harbor Committee, you're the chair, you can see what things in the comprehensive plan fell under the responsibilities of the Harbor Committee. So it does that for each committee so that we as liaisons and the committee chairs can see what they're supposed to be advancing of strategies and policies in the plan. Conservation Commission.
The Conservation Commission hasn't, uh, met recently, but, um, they did have a work day of volunteers and I was one of them down at Fort Point to clear off the, the old fort berm that, that earthworks there. And we, uh, I used loppers and there were some people with string trimmers and they really made it look a lot better. Um, also found a lot of delicious, uh, blackberries down there.
What about sinks?
Oh, jeez.
There's, there's a lot of oaks growing up all over the place down there. And I guess the state's gonna come in at some point and, uh, and bush, bush hog the area around the fort. And we all, the Conservation Commission also has a plan to clear out the old cellar hole where there used to be a, a building in the middle of the fort. Yeah, it's sort of got trees growing in it and things that were saplings. And, um, there's nothing new to report on the old Woods Farm property. Although they're working on it with land for makes future, there's still some things to work out. Um, but, um, that's, I guess that's it.
They are also, um, looking to put a picnic table out on the six acres next to the.
I didn't notice it had been done.
Yeah, they, um, can just ask approval for a sort of, um, pre, not yet assembled picnic table purchased from, uh, Lowe's so they can paddle it out, yeah, parts and then assemble it out there.
That's the only way to get there.
But yeah, that's fun to see those sort of two, um, projects this year tied together.
Well, and one of the communications things that was mentioned was, um, trails that people can hike and birding, different things like that. And, um, Erin and I were talking earlier today about maybe under the Discover St. George section of the website, having another place where you could have those links, you know, where can you go birding in St. George? Where can you hike in St. George?
Where can you paddle and kayak?
That's right. Um, and then have that information back to the parents of the website that have that. Because there are a lot of people that, and then the same little blurb could be in the some, the summary in St. George Business Alliance, um, book, you know, so people wanna know where they can do those things.
I've found a surprising number of people don't know about Roaring Spout, even people that moved here or live here.
Does it still roar though? I thought the rock.
Still works, yeah. On my daily run sometimes I go out there.
There.
And there's a nice sign that says, private road, pedestrians welcome, which is.
So where will people park for that?
There is a, you can either park right on Harsack Road because it is a dead end road if you're far enough off. But if you turn into the dirt road, that's Roaring Spout Road, there's, they've made an area that will accommodate two to three cars on the left.
Right there at Hellier, over Roaring Spout Road.
No, no, I don't mean there. You're not supposed to drive.
I know, you're not supposed to drive down there.
Goodbye. But I'm talking about right at Harsack Road. They've made an area. So right, so you're just, just off the paved road.
It's a pretty long walk.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
You'll live longer.
I know, I'm, people think the walk from the Driftin' parking lot is too far into the beach. And it's maybe an eighth of that walk.
But it, it, the cliffs are really wonderful out there. I love it there, yeah.
Yeah, that is a beautiful area. Um, Selfish Committee.
Um, I mean, September sixteenth, I believe.
I also, um, I got hanging on my doorknob a thing from, I assume it's from Jeff Schroder, um, from DMR, saying they're going around checking the water quality of the clam flats. And they must've come when I wasn't home wanting to check in Haskell Cove. So, um, I'm glad that they're doing that work. Um, and I look forward to learning what they learn about the water quality around our area. Solid Waste.
Um, the Solid Waste Committee met on the twentieth here at the town office at three P M. And they have their new member, Bruce Fagley. So they have a full board and they have their two alternates. Um, Ben was there and he brought up, um, St. George's Day Saturday, the day that the transfer station was closed. He said that people were not very happy about it and he came to the gate to find there was about sixty bags of trash that it had dumped.
Wow.
That he had to go in and take care of and clean up and.
Whoa. Well, I know you sent that video with that individual who walked his trash in.
Yeah, and people walked their trash inside the gate.
Well, I assume that Brandon and Tara will be revisiting that visit.
Visit, yeah.
If it's not.
I will, I would like to stick with the decision. Um, I think that we can communicate it better and further out so that folks are aware. And we gotta sign up on Ben's office door, but not everybody pops in to see him when they are there. And so we'll put a sign up right when, you know, right in the middle of where you're driving so that you have to see it. And, um, I feel pretty strongly that those guys deserve the day off to, you know, celebrate town as much as everyone else. And they won the float contest.
Yeah.
They need to be off to, um.
Well, and I think too, if probably more, more than anything other than emergencies, I think people would wanna get notifications if the transfer station is gonna be closed. So if this piece that.
It's true. I was told they even want notifications if it's going to be open.
They just want notifications.
Someone tell me that, yeah.
They don't know when it's open.
Well, then, you know, I don't know, like it's gonna be open two days after the fourth of July.
Well, I leave that to you. This is, you get paid the big bucks for these decisions.
I could stand there next year in front of the gates and give people the stick eye.
Yeah, I, I do think.
Don't you dare bring that trash back here.
There's a couple of things that we can do, you know, that I would wanna try before just making them stay open. stay open where they're that day.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, anyway, poor Ben had a lot of.
That's wrong.
He still worked on that day essentially.
Yeah.
And they um just recently sold a load of rigid plastic. He said they just about broke even on it. They're having there's no market for plastic anymore, so they've gotta decide what they wanna do in the future with plastics and how we can get rid of those. And they bought, um Ben said they've gotten two new containers. So the two that have been replaced will be repaired and used for other things over at the transfer station for storage. Um, they discussed.
They haven't got them yet, but they're ordering.
They're ordering.
Yeah.
And they will keep the other two that we have and repair and continue to use those. So long have added expense. They talked about expanding the compost program. And they said they can do that with the current license they have. It's big enough to accommodate that and by moving things around over there, they will have the space to expand that. Um, Ben has been doing research, and we had discussed that they would like to keep the wood debris and chip it and sell the chips, but chippers are astronomically expensive. He said anywhere on fifty to over a hundred thousand dollars.
What about having somebody come in and chip for you?
That's what they've been doing.
And I think Tara said that was over eight hundred dollars to have them come in.
Just for one time, right?
So.
Well, but uh I, to haul it away as well.
Did they take it away too?
And so the idea is that, yeah, you know, if you're trying to sell wood chips um.
Then you don't have to.
Yeah, but.
So they're gonna do more research for the chips. Eventually, they would like to keep them here and be able to sell them because people have asked about buying them.
The the deficit of revenue that Irene alluded to earlier is, you know, if numbers from last year were to hold this year, the deficit from what's budgeted to what can be expected to be generated over there is around twenty-two thousand. And so these are two sort of efforts to help um cut into that, you know, they sold out of compost pretty early May last year. They can increase the capacity uh to produce it. Um, then that would be a way to increase revenue. Um they may need to figure out a way to get more compostable product in order to produce more, um but there are some ideas being kicked around about that as well.
I wondered, you know, like, what if they let people bring their own buckets and fill them because those bags, you know, those just go back into the trash that they come in.
Compost.
The compost bags that they sell it in, so there might be just a thought, there might be a way to, you know, when you, when you want a lot of compost, you don't why buy five bags? Maybe you could just bring four buckets and fill them up.
Well, when people want a lot of compost, they're buying it by a truckload.
Yeah.
Not bags.
Oh, you can do that now.
I'm quite sure, maybe not.
No, you can do it.
Okay.
That's good to know.
Yes.
And there was discussion again about the meeting time. Some of the members asked if they could go back to early in the morning and Ben said no. It has to stay in the afternoons. And um he would like to change it from Wednesday to Tuesday because when he leaves early on Wednesday, that leaves them shorter man in the afternoon, so their next meeting will be on um September sixteenth, which is a Tuesday at two P M. So um he cares to see how many members come to that meeting and as the liaison, some months I may not be able to make it in there too. This is poor now it hits.
Cause you're working.
So I will let you know if I can't make the meeting. And that was, and oh, well, the same day the school board met, they had three separate meetings.
I saw that.
The first meeting, they reviewed their twenty-four, twenty-five goals for the students and staff, and then they went on to their twenty-five, twenty-six. So set their goals for this year. Um, they did their end of year twenty-five review of overview of revenue and expenses, which was fine. They're working on their audit with Fred Brewer. And they've had a couple of glitches with software, so that slowed that down. And then there, of course, they call him all the time and he doesn't return calls, which probably is understandable. He's so busy that, you know, so they're trying to get that moving along. It's coming along slowly. And then I couldn't stay for the third meeting, but um Ken Oldberger and Terry Driscoll were there to talk for them and work with them on a solar panel project.
Yes, he did um email. He had talked to me about that a while back, and so I thought that, I didn't realize he was meeting with the school board, so he reported today that um they got a positive response from the school board about putting solar panels um that would generate electricity at the school and um depending on whether you pay back for the purchase of the solar panels or not, the taxpayers would save either seven hundred thousand dollars or one point three million dollars.
That that being hundred was the purchase price.
Well, so you've, it is, that's, that's, that's why um if you, if you buy the panels, you pay nothing the first seven. Yes, so you pay nothing, and then if you pay for the panels, seven, about seven hundred thousand dollars, then your total savings is, I think, maybe I, maybe I shouldn't give these numbers, cause what if I'm wrong and it's unhelpful? But anyway, there's this very significant savings in electric. Um, by doing this and um the fact that you can choose to not pay for them means you know, you can save money without paying anything. You might be able to save more if you pay something, but that was an issue. Irene?
Uh, the town had purchased solar panels from Revision Energy. The way the town did it, um we didn't pay for the panels for the first ten years. We bought the electricity they generated. But that was a significant savings because we didn't have the increase in electric cost that the general public did. And as far as the end purchase price, that's an estimate.
Right.
If the panels performs better than anticipated, that purchase cost is gonna be more than the seven hundred thousand.
Oh.
Just, just to keep that in mind, that and that's what happened with the town. Um, they did forgive some of it. So that um we were able to purchase them with the amount that we had in the reserve. Um, only because they reduced the price.
But those panels at the transfer station, that, would you say that has worked out pretty well overall?
That is covering the electricity for the transfer station, this building. Um, they bought the old both of the fire stations. Um, Juniper Street, Tangle Storage Road.
Wow.
Um, we're we're paying delivery charge.
Yeah, and so what we're talking about is what Tammy mentioned and the Ken Oldberger and Terry Driscoll's visit to the school board would be a school board budget issue, nothing to do with the town's budget or the select board budget. Um, and so these are decisions that fall under their purview, but I, because Ken had told me that it would save the taxpayers a lot of money in the long run. I'm really happy to hear that the school board is interested in pursuing it, and it's an opportunity that ends at the end of this year because these um grant programs um for solar panels are gonna end.
No surprise there.
And finally, the grand opening was a fabulous success.
Yes, it was. It was a wonderful party.
Yeah.
Did, did they talk about how the Makerspace Building is gonna be used at the
No, they didn't.
School board meeting?
I would assume that would be something that could be, as that separate of the school that 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 Ford or committee that they have will be discussing all of that.
That's what I'm trying to figure out is you know, they had told us in the spring that there was gonna be a memorandum of understanding between the school board and the Grace Institute.
There may be, I.
Yeah.
They didn't get into all that stuff.
It's a hybrid, so it's just, you know, it, it's hard to know for those of us who haven't heard.
I'm sure they have it all figured out. They just haven't put it out there yet.
Brandon, um Tammy mentioned the school audit challenges. Do you have any um you or Irene have anything to say about Fred Brewer and audit?
Yeah, no, I mean, no challenges on our end, other than the fact that he can't begin R twenty-three audit until the uh he completes the schools. Uh, Fred's been very responsive. I've called him a couple of times during this, and he has taken my call um like immediately or called me back, you know, same day, so I have not had the same challenges. I haven't needed to call as frequently would be my guess because
It could be.
We're just waiting. Irene has sent him all of the documentation that he needs, has even followed up to make sure that he's not missing anything, so we're just we're just sort of.
Waiting for the school.
Yeah, and they, again, they're, they have an accounting software that they use that is very cumbersome for Fred to then pull data from, and so he's so that was really what was slowing him down. And I asked if he was still on track to meet his September date, he said, I'm going to try my hardest, which was not the most.
Trying to solve the problem, so hopefully they'll make them.
You want it when?
Well, I mean, it's scary because the the bond for the HVAC system requires that audit to be done. Definitely, yeah.
And Fred is aware of that. He knows the states.
Yeah. So Parks and Rec.
We're meeting September ninth.
Resilience.
Uh, Resilience met on August fifteenth in South Thomaston to discuss the Climate Action Plan, and the Climate Action Plan is being drafted in two different topics. Understanding climate vulnerability and also investigating and prioritizing strategies to cope with it. Um, and as discussed earlier, there's gonna be two public meetings, October eighth, October ninth um in each town.
Do you know which one's gonna be here?
I don't know. Do you know, Erin, this town?
I don't know that it's decided yet.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously nothing for the scholarship committee. So I guess one final thing I wanted to ask this group is whether you would be interested in hearing occasional presentations from staff department heads. You know, like we, we have the committees and we have Brandon. But would people have any interest? You know, obviously we hear from them somewhat at the time of the budget. But are there any presentations or would you be interested in inviting the St. George Business Alliance to come in or Blueberry Cove or Herring Cut or any, are there any things you'd like to hear about at our meetings?
I'd first like to make sure that staff department heads were willing to, you know what I mean? Like they are not very inclined to.
Right.
And so um I just, you know, wanting to respect that boundary um. But if there is anything very specific that you think would be.
I mean, Brandon keeps us up to date. And outside organizations, eh, not really.
I mean, it's welcome to ask to be on the agenda if you have some reason.
I don't wanna. I mean, the the Business Alliance will tell you what appears on their website and on the message board. There's there's not a whole lot more than that, so, yeah.
But you can go and look at that.
Yeah, you can.
As far as the staff, I would think if there are any issues, they would go to Brandon and Brandon would bring them.
Well, it isn't so much issues. I just wondered if, if anybody wanted to have an overview of like you know, this is what the fire department does, or this is what the ambulance, a little educational thing.
If you would ever like an update, you know, a a deeper dive into the current state of any department, you know, let me know, and I'm happy to do that instead of like a account manager's report. And during that, I'm, you know, I would invite the department heads to attend if they would like to. Um, but if that type of discussion and conversation would be helpful, I'm 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 more than happy to do so.
Because there, even though, like with Parks and Rec, because I don't have a kid in the school and I don't go to those committee meetings, you know, it's one thing if what Brian tells us this week is, you know, there's the Muscle Ridge Tournament or there's some, but I don't have any overview sense of everything that go, that department does. Um, and so for me, it would be helpful just to occasionally hear the overview, like this is how many events we have in a year, this is the kinds of things, because I don't know that.
Well, for me, if I wanna know something, I go and find out or I go talk to the person. It's like, if you wanna know, go to the source.
Well, I would prefer that you all don't go to the staff.
Yeah, I think you have to go through.
I was thinking like the fire department. You see Mike around town all the time and you bump into him and if you you know, have a question or concern, he's willing to, you know.
But I don't think you can really talk to that given the public nature of our meetings. That needs to be in this meeting.
I mean, the Parks and Rec Department, I think, is a fair example because for so long they've operated very independently um and, you know, sort of in their own silo, and so if you felt like that was you know, the, the group as a whole could use some education around that department or EMS because now we are two years into its absorption or whatever it may be. At any point, again, I'm happy to put that together and uh invite a department head, although not require it, um and 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 do that, I mean, you know, I I don't mind doing something that is more um specific uh.
Yeah, I I think, you know, just at some point in the next few months, I I think it would be nice to hear more about the whole picture of the Parks and Rec Department and everything that they do. And then maybe, you know, at some point, whenever we know more what's happening with the telehealth hub. Um, if you could share that piece, whether it's the whole ambulance department now that we're two years in or just that.
I have a meeting Thursday about telehealth, and so I would have been on my next um report, but can um and so I'll I'll add it to that. I mean, frankly, Brian might be the person best suited to give you your thorough overview of Parks and Rec. He was the committee chair for a decade, so.
Right. Because a lot of people do pay attention to our meetings and, you know, present, any presentation that happens here will get the word out about things that are happening, so there's that as a part of our communications.
There'd be a lot of interest in telehealth.
Yeah, I I, it's gonna be interesting to see what's gonna happen with that.
Oh.
So do people have any other agenda items?
No.
Susan?
I have a real easy question.
Hopefully.
Can you clarify? Um, wh- when will we be updated on your decision of whether you're gonna make Driftin one way?
Uh, it won't happen this season. I think it happening mid-season would be a bigger communication challenge than if it were for a full season, so, uh, you know, I think sometime uh, once after we pull the ramp out and begin to look at next season for Driftin, so uh I would say mid-winter to uh spring, you know, before the beach really gets busy.
Okay.
But is that in the context of a quick fix? I mean, it's not in the context of the engineering report that's going on now.
No, it would be for the twenty-six, the the summer twenty.
Okay, just for that season. Because that report's not gonna be ready for a while, and then there's all funding issues regarding what we're gonna do next there, so.
Right. Um, and so, you know, if in this year's budget building process. Um and so, you know, if in this year's budget building process. Um, you know, we allocate funds to do a um. Fast fix of that road.
Yeah.
Get it opened up to two lanes.
Sure.
But it's not gonna happen and, you know, till, you know, late in the season or at the very beginning, those types of things would influence.
Okay.
That decision, so.
Good question.
There will be a a a plan for twenty twenty six before there's the long term plan, so.
The other, it was just a comment, you made a comment about um Driftin parking lot and how people. Don't wanna walk from the park and, well, I just happened to come across Googling Driftin Beach. And it refers to Driftin Beach as adequate or. There is parking along the road. And there was an overflow lot. So that's just something to think about for the future that people think.
Those could be, those are likely driven, you know, it's like likely a summary from Google reviews, you know, and so not. The towns.
That's right.
Report on the facility, you know. We could look into whether or not we could correct that, this was on Google that.
Several sites about Driftin.
Well, if they're if they're all, if they're all third party sites, I can't really control any of the content on that. I don't know if Driftin is under our Discover Saint George. Or not.
Said it was a public, I think it referred to it as a public beach.
It is a public beach, I don't, what I'm saying is I don't know if it's on our website and if it's not, you know, we can.
Some of us are old enough to remember when there was no parking lot and that's the only place people parked.
Which is how it, you know.
Is, are we waiting for FEMA money to fix that road? Was that one of the projects? We put in a claim for that.
It was the brick grant, remember?
Oh, and they took that money away. So that's why we're gonna have to pay for it ourselves as taxpayers to fix it, right?
Right, and I think unfortunately, we're gonna miss our um project deadline for FEMA.
May I ask a question about the one way?
Sure.
I- is this a temporary situation for one way during the summertime or is this one way? Year round is being proposed.
That's a good question, it would probably be um the summertime, I think that it would be. You know, Memorial Day to Labor Day uh would be. Same time that we put the ramp in and. Bring the porta potties in sort of, you know, when we officially open the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Again, that's speculative right now, um that's what I would imagine.
All right, thank you very much. All right, well, if we don't have any other business, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Second, I'll in favor, that's fine, thank you, everybody. Um the next meeting will be September eighth and Steve will be chairing the meeting, I'll be out of town. That'll be shorter, I'm sure.